Good evening and welcome. I'd first wait a motion to leave the non-public and to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Kelly, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor McCackern?
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Here.
Councillor Tabor?
Here.
Councillor Cook?
Here.
Councillor Denton?
Here.
Councillor Blaylock?
Present.
Councillor Bagley?
Here.
Councillor Moreau?
Here.
Councillor Lombardi?
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. With no meaning minutes to accept or volunteer committee reports, we are on to public comment. We first, oh, we got to go to Lucille on Police Station, Lucille Thiernen on Police Station Extension, Connors Cottage.
So this is on, right?
It is. You just have to state your name and your city of residence.
Right. To the Honorable Mayor, Dagon McCackern, good evening, members of the council and attendees and neighbors, I'm Lucy Therian. I've loved, can I, go ahead?
Certainly.
I've loved Portsmouth for almost 40 years. I hope you do too. Managing a city is a big machine. Thank you. My letter to the editor of the Herald on the 14th of July regarding the aesthetics of the location of the proposed police station was very well received, but the last mock-up in the Herald of the 26th of July is just as bad, just as long, bad too, as our historic building Connors Cottage. We would lose our view on at least two floors, be boxed in on the front line. Connors Cottage is the, located in the municipal hill facing City Hall, the old hospital. There are 20 autonomous apartments for people 62-plus. It's not a nursing or assisted living facility. It's a home to retired medical personnel, widowers, widows, artists, musicians, authors, and more. Our parking lot is on the opposite side of the building and the rent is on a sliding scale. We had major concerns threatening our well-being. I'm holding a petition signed by 18 of the 20 residents against the proposed location of the police extension. Two people were away. We would be on an island with construction on both sides as they enlarge Junkins Avenue on the opposite side. Dust, noise, constant disruption all day, stress, lack of sleep, and asthma bronchitis allergies, hot weather for two years or more. One has to be 62-years-old to live there but expect a long life, God and city willing. When the city redid the municipal parking lot and the underground plumbing right under our bedrooms facing the police station, it was a full month of torture. I lost 20 pounds and as doctor documented, with many copayments. No more, please, no more. Why would the Historic District Commission, HDC, allow this? It objected to having our windows replaced on the northeast side where our bedrooms are until they blew in and left us with snowdrifts inside our apartments. We can't go ahead with a handicap lift on the side of our parking lot yet because of architectural demands by the HDC. People trip on the high concrete steps frequently, giving one resident a concussion. In order to not jeopardize our well-being and peace, I would suggest the lower parking lot for an extension since the police want to remain close to home. The campus location is not a central, I guess I'm done. Is that what it means?
It does. If you're close to, if you have-
I am. I have one thing left. When I owned condos in Portsmouth, I drove up Junkins Avenue admiring our beautiful historic building and wondered what it was. It drew me.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Next up, Eric Anderson on the topic of Sherburne.
Thank you very much. My name is Eric Anderson, 38 Georges Terrace in Portsmouth. I'll have two brief comments. I forget how many meetings ago I made just an observation that there was considerable amount of funding in the city coffers that was explained to be stabilization income for water and sewer rates. I think it was in the year of $60 million. I just want to ask the question, is there reasonable expectation that that amount of city money is producing the type of income that is stabilizing these rates? Because it doesn't appear that it's taking place with water and sewer rates rising. So expect no answer, but sometime, some type of explanation along the way whether that amount of money is producing the type of revenue that is supposed to help the citizens of Portsmouth. Second, while you were here from the city manager this evening about the RFP plans for the Sherburne site, I hope and I think you will be expected to give some type of comment or guidance to her on the type of preference of development that would go there. I think it's appropriate that there's, this has been a long process and I think it's been concluded to some extent that it's hopeful that that school, that the Sherburne school would remain in some capacity for some type of reuse or application since it's such an integral component of that neighborhood. And to see it demolished, I think would be a tragedy. But I know that the city manager is, for the four remaining developers for this project, will submit two proposals, one with the school, one without the school. And I hope the city council gives some type of guidance that they would have some preference for that, for that facility remaining. Because I think it's an important, as I said, I think it's an important component of the neighborhood. That would be it. And I hope that there is reasonable public participation for the Panaway, Holly Lane, and Goldville communities that are very close to this potential development. And whatever developer selected, I hope that they provide some type of public process to the neighborhood for their opinion. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Next, Patricia Robinson on Police Station, Connors resident.
Hi all, I'm Patricia Robinson. I live here in Connors. I love Portsmouth and I've really had enjoyed my time here. I want to second everything that Lucy said. We are older people and we do tend to have, even if we don't look like we're on our last leg, we tend to have a lot of the health problems that accumulate. So I do understand the desire to have the police station within part of the community campus, or city campus, I should say. But that's part of my concern. Just everything I've seen in Portsmouth, I know people have spoken about the view from here, but I've always been very kind of enjoying the view on each approach. It seems like whatever approach you approach this campus from, it's welcoming, it's inspiring, it's embracing of the city. And you, from here you can see a lot of the landmarks in the city. And just based on what I understand from the construction in terms of making this driveway a two-way, you know, blocking it off, it, it's going to tend aesthetically to close the campus off from the city. It's going to close us off, but it's also going to close the approach, especially from town. And I think that's an aesthetic that we might not appreciate until we've seen it gone. And once, my understanding is there's going to be trees moved and all that sort of thing. It's something that we can't envision being gone, but once it's gone, it's not restorable. So I would just like to see some thought put into that aesthetic in terms of whether other alternatives. I've heard proposals for like a sub, a main station and a substation. That seems something, it also, it does seem like the facility proposed might be a little bit more than we might need here in Portsmouth to have right on site, which might be a cost-saving thing if we looked at it that way. But yeah, I, I was kind of disappointed that it was decided so quickly. And I would very much like to, if this possible, I can't tell you for sure, you would know better than I, but if there's some way to reconsider what, what the change would mean for the city and what it would look like from both ends, from the city as well as from here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Patricia. Next, Robin Hustlidge, 361 Hanover Development Zoning. Oh, we get, we get, presence.
Good evening. Robin Hustlidge, I live at 27 Rock Street. And I'm here to speak about the 361 Hanover Development, also known as the Heinemann Building, which is located at the end of my small street. When nearby developments started taking place, we knew, the neighborhood, that the Heinemann property wouldn't be far behind, which is why a group of Islington Creek neighbors reached out to the planning board's Juliet Walker in August of 2019 to find out what our neighborhood could do to address the incorrect zoning of that lot. This property is Zoned CD5, the most intensive zoning the city has, and it is located in the heart of our neighborhood, which consists of one-to-two-story residential homes built in the 1700s and 1800s. In case you're not familiar with CD5 zoning, it allows such things as hotels with more than 500 rooms, indoor performance facilities with 500-plus people, conference centers, restaurants serving 500 or more people, a shopping center. Bottom line, in our little neighborhood, that kind of use does not belong. We worked for many months with Juliet culminating in a request sent to the planning board for the meeting on January 23rd, 2020, to have this lot rezoned to CD4 for the Heinemann portion and rezoned to CD4L1 for the portion which fronts on Hanover Street. CD4L1 is a much less intensive zoning with uses such as single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, townhouses, multifamily homes with up to eight dwellings, historic preservation museums, that type of thing, much more in keeping with what our neighborhood currently is. At the planning board meeting on January 23rd, 2020, board members agreed that this lot should be rezoned and they decided that a public work session should be scheduled where community input could also be heard. This meeting was scheduled for March 26th, 2020. Well, I don't have to tell you what happened March 2020. COVID happened and this planning board's work session was postponed until further notice. The neighborhood followed up on numerous occasions during COVID and in the meantime, Juliet left, Nick Cracknell took over. Our neighborhood then reached out to Nick and he shared that he was moving forward on other portions of the zoning amendments and that the rezoning of the Heinemann and nearby lots would follow after. As you know, Nick then left. We then reached out to our city manager and she told us to wait until the new planning director came. I draw your attention to the bottom of page two of my handout. A new developer is developing that Heinemann lot now and they're taking advantage of the current high-density CD5 zoning. And you can see pictures of what they're proposing. What I'd like you to do is please bring back the public session for rezoning of the Heinemann lot and other properties along there. We never got our session so that we could provide input and so that that area could be rezoned, more in keeping with our neighborhood. If this development goes forward, it is as it is because it's already been vested, but should things fall to the wayside, then we would rather have the CD4L1 zoning in that front portion and then the back Heinemann be CD4. So I ask for your help on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Next up is Nicole Upierre on the same topic.
Good evening. Nicole Upierre, 44 Rock Street, Director Butters to 361 Hanover. I'm not anti-development. I'm not old Portsmouth. I'm not new Portsmouth. What I am is a Portsmouth resident in need of city representation and that is why I'm here. I was incredibly disheartened when it became clear we were misguided by the planning department regarding the zoning of 361 Hanover, which at the time included someone who now works for the developer. I couldn't make this up. The zoning is completely inappropriate and we now will have to live with it literally, regardless of all our efforts to correct it. These efforts go back several years to preempt the very outcome we are now facing. I was also very disheartened when the planning board chair stated at the July planning board meeting, quote, "Overall, I like your project. I think you listened to the neighbors. If it felt like anyone was listening to the neighbors, we wouldn't be here." My neighbors and I are requesting that any land deals regarding the public land and 361 Hanover require a public hearing and notification to a Butters. Behind closed-door deals regarding public land is not acceptable. At the July planning board meeting, the builder insinuated this was already happening, again disheartening. We also ask that we be put on the city council's agenda to have the zoning assessed regardless of the project already being vested, as Robin just stated. I hope you had the opportunity to read the letter we submitted and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Next one.
Janice Vaughn, maybe?
Oh!
Sorry about that. Good evening. I'm Marcy Vaughn. I live at 407 Hanover Street. And I'm here tonight because our neighborhood, I live in the Islington Creek neighborhood along with Robin and Nicole, whom you just heard from, we're concerned about government transparency. Let me tell you why. So first, with respect to the license agreement that Nicole just alluded to, a license for a piece of property that is owned by the city and it's associated with the 361 Hanover Street property and development, I think some decision-makers in this room were just as surprised as we were to learn about that license agreement and to learn that the city didn't enforce its right to 18 parking spaces during designated times in our neighborhood where parking is at an extreme premium. There's huge pressure on parking in our neighborhood. And for 18 years, the city had a right to 18 parking spots in the Heinemann lot in front of my house and we didn't know about it. And I think you didn't know about it either. So those parking spots were critical. But in addition to that, as a taxpayer, I would like to know the sum total value of the consideration that was due to the city adjusted annually for fair market value over the course of that 18-year license that wasn't enforced. Secondly, my concern for transparency and the concern that our neighborhood has been talking about relates to the disappearance of the zoning amendment that my neighbors proposed beginning in 2019 from the agenda or the priorities of the zoning board. As you know, the zoning, a planning board voted to hold a public meeting on that amendment. Didn't happen for reasons relating to COVID, but it was reaffirmed as a top priority of the planning board after the city business resumed. And it was never held. It disappeared. We lost our rights. So I would like to know, why was that amendment removed from the city's priorities? Who made that decision? When was that decision made? And critically, why was our neighborhood never informed? And that flows into my third concern, which relates to actually the city ordinances. So I'm requesting that the city amend the city ordinances to be more transparent around the process by which a citizen can request a zoning amendment. So I was rather surprised at the May zoning board meeting when a member of the zoning board indicated that any of the citizens, any of our neighborhood group could have come to the city council to request a zoning amendment. And so essentially, we sat on our rights by relying on the planning board. I was surprised by that because back in April, when I first learned as a new resident of the neighborhood about this planning board meeting that never happened, I thought to myself, well, heck, there's got to be another way to advance a zoning amendment. So I read the ordinances. May I continue, Mr. Mayor? I read the zoning ordinances. And I read in section 10, section one, article one, section 10.151, "This ordinance may be amended in accordance with the provisions of state law." So I went to state law. RSA 675-4 outlines a process to amend a zoning amendment for towns and villages where a citizen can petition and it's amended by ballot vote. So I said to myself, well, that doesn't apply to us. And I concluded that there was no other process by which we could seek a zoning amendment absent the planning board, which had already deep-sixed us. So, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I mean, I am a lawyer, but I'm not a land use lawyer. And this stuff is super complicated. And I am confident that this is my mistake, that there is a process by which a citizen like me can come to you and request a zoning amendment. And I'm confident that the public has been notified of that. But if I can't figure it out, other people probably can't figure it out either. And so the government should be more transparent about that. On the other hand, if there is no provision in state law, if there isn't something I missed, then that means that I didn't have notice of my opportunity to come to you in April before that zoning vested. I didn't have the opportunity until it was too late. And that's a due process problem. That's a notice and due process problem. So I thank you all for your service. I know this is hard work. I don't mean to come here only when I have criticism because I generally have accolades for you all. But this is a problem and we need more transparency. We're asking you to advocate for us by using that license agreement to help our neighborhood preserve our historic, really historic neighborhood. And I would like some information. So thank you so much.
All right. My eyes are getting really bad. Cal, who do you think this is?
It's because it's your birthday.
Is it Elizabeth? Police Station Edition? No, Elizabeth, we're going to come back to you, but on June Elizabeth Payne? There's some-
Is that right?
Yep.
Last name Payne, please come up. I just couldn't read your first name. Patricia, is that, no?
Elizabeth, were you planning on testifying?
No.
There's a Payne, P-A-I-N-E, Police Station Edition. Okay, but you didn't sign, okay. There's a tough one here too on, who do you think that is?
Something Troy, maybe?
Something Troy. Did somebody sign up and hasn't, did somebody sign up on the, the, to speak at public comment?
We were told to sign in.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
Oh, okay. So you just, all right. So you just signed it. Okay, great. All right. Saving some time here. All right. Listen, now we'll go to, all right, Bill, come on up.
Bill Downey, 67 Bow Street. Where to start? I guess on the Times building. City attorney, as I said last time we had talked, I thought you did a great job holding the line. I hope you continue to hold the line. I would like to know why, though, things have gotten to the point that they are. I mean, where have the inspections been? What's the protocol? Where's the documentation? I mean, I know Jeff Naraki quite well. He gave that report years ago. The building was fine. He was only ordered to preserve two sides, you guys. Two sides. Those arguments that he's burdened is bogus. He's always been difficult on these issues. And I take great exception by the attorney saying it's your responsibility. That's very Trumpian to project that kind of responsibility. So please, continue to hold the line. I just talked to Trevor. I would find it very helpful if you could let the community know, what's the policy? How many times do you guys go into that building to check it out? It shouldn't be where we are today. I mean, that's an amazing building. As you come down State Street, it glows like no other building at sunset, just like the St. John's Church. It's a treasure. He only has to preserve two sides. I ask you to hold him responsible. Too many times, developers come in, they know what they're doing. It's a BS routine. But don't be the abominable snowman and have no teeth. Let's punch back. Let's hold the line. And finally, I want to say to Councillor Cook, your statement last week, or two weeks ago, was it? A lot of stuff's been going on lately, so forgive me for that. But I would, I told the mayor the other day on the sidewalk, I thought it was one of the top three or four I've ever heard from a city councillor. It wasn't merely what you said. It was your comportment. It was your three-dimensional viewage of it. You showed great respect and professionalism. I really am very much against the solar panels and HDC. But when someone looks at it three-dimensionally and validates both sides and then comes in, that's good governance. And that's what the judge did when we sued the city in the McIntyre. He said, "I understand your position, but I'm inclined to hesitate for right now," or pause. You feel validated. Mayor, your, your interview was very good the other day. I saw you speak about you want citizens to feel engaged. People will not feel engaged if they don't feel validated. So that's the essential component. And we've had some great statesmen in the city over the years, but I thought that one was one of the best and I just wanted to thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Next up, back to Elizabeth Bratter. Heart's still in Portsmouth. I know that.
Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. The letter that's being passed out to you, you received in the Jan, June 25th, I believe, agenda. I think it was June 25th. Was that the last meeting? Anyway, good evening, Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. It would be greatly appreciated if any city lands surrounding 361 Hanover Street, which are asked of the city manager, city council, or the planning board to be used or purchased by any of 361 Hanover Street entities in any way that a public hearing and notification of Butters by certified mail of what is being proposed and public comment be able to be presented before any consideration of any proposals there. It would also be greatly appreciated if the city council, which per Attorney McCourt is allowed to do, move the proposed rezoning of lots 10, sorry, 0138-0063-000, 0138-0063-001, 0138-0063-002. In other words, all the lots at the Heinemann location, which were presented to the planning board on January 23rd, 2020 by the planning department. Please place this rezoning on your agenda for approval without any involvement by the planning board. According to Mr. McCourt, Attorney McCourt, that can be done by you. I'm not sure. I read it differently, but he's the lawyer.
We'll ask him.
Neighbors were, neighbors were continually placated by the planning department due to COVID, then by the new planning director, then sent back to the planning department by the new city manager, and then unendedly put off by Nick Cracknell until he became the consultant of these lots. What has happened here is questionable and likely unethical. One could question whether a lot of this was wrongdoing by public officials along the path. As the elected officials of the city, it would be nice of many of the campaign promises of protecting neighborhoods be acted on. Please move the rezoning forward to minimally change the zoning to protect the neighborhood from the many potential high-intensive uses of CD5. I think everybody here understands that the current development is locked in at CD5, but you are able to rezone it. And if anything changes, that new zoning would stick in place. Therefore, the request for the rezoning. We're not trying to change anything. That developer is locked in. We already understand that. But we do want any public lands to come to the public and we do want that zoning changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And that concludes public comment. I await a motion to suspend the rolls and bring forth- I await a motion to suspend the rules and bring forth the update on the police station.
So moved, but did we check Zoom?
Oh, is there Zoom? Oh, yeah. We still got Zoom. Anybody on Zoom?
Governor, thank you.
I didn't see, yeah.
Second.
City manager usually taps me, hey, D, gotta get the Zoom. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Impose. And just, um, before we pick that up, you know, there's, appreciate all the comments tonight. You know, there was, we had a lot of planning departments. We went through three during COVID. So I, I hope that the discussion going forward, it was certainly respectful tonight. We'll continue to look for resolution around that, and thank you for bringing that in. On the, on the police station, which we're going to address now, Lucy, you had mentioned the article that showed in the July 27th, don't typically kind of correct anything, but we didn't, we don't have a new design yet for that, so the paper's going to continue to run the same picture that they have. We'll hear now where those designs are. There's going to be a lot of advance notice around that. We have purposely not had a lot going on in the summer because we don't expect everybody to use their nice summer days when they can be out enjoying the heat to be in here, although the AC is pretty nice sometimes. We want to make sure that that is a full-throated discussion with a lot of notice. And part of the reason why we chose this site or the reason I wanted to choose this site is that we know we're going to get a lot of feedback with here in addition to the cost savings. So we want it, we expect it. We haven't changed anything, but city manager, over to you to, to talk more about that.
Thank you, Mayor, and we're joined, and I would welcome my colleague, Facilities Director Joe Almeida, who's part of the internal working group, who can provide the, the update for this meeting.
Good evening, city manager, mayor, and councillors. As recently as today, we continue to have, be busy having meetings, developing design concepts that respond directly to all of the concerns we've heard over the past year and a half. Primarily, we heard loud and clear of the desire to minimize the impact to the front view shed in front of City Hall. So we currently have three concepts before us that we continue to develop. We have another meeting tomorrow to, to further those concepts. Some of them have no building whatsoever on the front portion of, of the, of City Hall. Those tend to not be, aesthetically, they're successful, but in reality, they're not successful to the program at all. It creates very, it creates a very difficult program for the, for the police department to not have their spaces. The adjacencies are very important for the various functions of the FPD. However, we do have some concepts that, that have a much smaller addition on the front that minimally impact view sheds, but it's, it's nothing like the full, the full station being, going out along the drive. We are also very responsive to the idea of using as much of the station as we possibly can, so we, we are doing that. We are, we're getting very close to almost triggering the need for the design to, the design is starting to trigger almost a master plan because the more we come into the building, we start to affect other people in other departments. And we're trying not to move other departments within City Hall because those are just projects that would have to happen before the station got their attention, which, you know, would be unfortunate. So it's a very fine line to walk. I look forward to presenting the concepts soon. I don't believe we have a date yet to present them to you. We do have meetings scheduled with the working group soon. We'll present that to them. We'll get their feedback and direction. We are staying within the budget that you told us to stay within. And truly, that's, that's a very brief explanation of where we are. We're, we're, we've, I believe at this point, we, we haven't put much attention at all into the previous concept that was not, it simply wasn't met with, with excitement. So we've, uh, we've left that to the side for now.
And your honor, for the folks that have joined us this evening, we give an update every council meeting, so the next council meeting will be August 19th. And I believe from Joe's comments that we won't be ready with any new designs at that meeting. It will most likely be sometime in, in one, in the September meeting, perhaps.
Correct, correct.
But we will continue to keep the public and the council updated as we move forward.
We're not going to be able to sneak in, sneak in a $40 million police station here without significant public input. So our goal is to get it and to have a, a robust conversation. Thank you, Joe, for the updates that you provided. And if you all want to stay, certainly entitled to, um, the entire meeting, but if you do, I'm happy to see you back in a couple of weeks when we talk about it again.
Mayor, Councilor Cook.
Oh, Councilor Cook.
Um, I just, I had a question around the budget because I know you said that we're trying to stay within the budget, and has there been any effort to reduce the budget further?
Well, one of the things that we were asked to do, which will have a huge effect on that, is there was a request, and I believe it was, the request came directly from you, Councilor Cook, to verify, via a third party, to verify staffing projections and needs. And we are doing that. We've reached out to three separate firms that have expertise in this, that have no current relation to the project. So that's going to inform, now, what we don't know is they might come to us and say, we're, we're either right on, we're oversized, or undersized. We really don't know. We need them to tell us to confirm that. But that, that, that will help inform that, that, that question.
And I have a follow-on to that, too. Do we have an idea of what average square footage per, per staff member normally would be as well? I know that that was, that's kind of one of the things I've been asking about. How much space do you actually need per staff member? And for a typical police station, for the staffing that would be in the building on a regular basis?
Right. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask permission to follow up with that answer because depending on the staff department and the staff rank and so forth, those numbers vary, vary quite a bit. And to be honest with you, I have so many numbers in my head now from various projects. I, I wouldn't be confident with the answer I gave you, but I can certainly follow up with that answer formally.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to public hearings and/or ordinances, uh, public hearing, second reading of ordinance, public hearing, second reading of proposed ordinance, amending chapter 10, article 5A, character-based zoning, section 10.5A, 43.33 regarding building and story heights of the zoning ordinance. We have a presentation.
We do. And we have Planning Manager Peter Stiff, who's going to walk you through the handful of slides here this evening. Welcome, Peter.
Good evening, Mayor.
Loving the hair, Peter.
Yeah, thank you. My wife says she likes it, so.
Oh, that's why. That's all, the only, the only thing we need.
So, good evening, Mayor, city councillor, councillors. This is the second reading and public hearing of these amendments that were adopted two days and a year ago, on August 7th. If you go to the next, next slide, August 7th, 2023, the council adopted zoning changes in the character districts to require both workforce housing and community space through a conditional use permit for certain incentives. If you recall, prior to those amendments, it was optional to either provide community space or workforce housing. And for the, for all the projects we were getting, we were just getting community space. So we wanted to provide more requirements for workforce housing. And there were three types. If you were located in the West End Overlay District, North End Overlay District, there's an incentive for larger footprint buildings. And then there's a third type for, if you're not located in any of the incentive overlay districts and you have a parcel that is over an acre, there's an incentive for up to an additional story of 15 feet, a house or duplex building type, and/or a mixed-use building in exchange for 50% community space and workforce housing. Go to the next slide. Staff had an inquiry about the, if, if someone came through for the development for just a mixed-use building, could that provide the incentive for community space and not workforce housing? And the, the problem comes with the definition of a mixed-use building, which states that it's a development project that includes a mix of A, residential and non-residential uses, or B, office and retail service uses. So the definition of mixed-use development is complicated because it could be an office and retail service building without housing. If you go to the next slide, so there was a memo from Deputy Attorney McCourt and Director Brits on June 3rd, seeking clarification from the council. Did we intend to have that allowance for a project that did not provide workforce housing and just a mixed-use building? And council said, no, this, it should apply to residential projects that would require workforce housing. So they referred that draft to the planning board, and the planning board had a public hearing on June 20th and recommended the amendments that are before you tonight. There was discussion at the planning board meeting about the 50% requirement for community space, and some planning board members thought that might be a problem for, for, but they didn't make any recommendations on changing that number, but they just wanted the council to be aware of that. If you go to the next slide, so really, these amendments just clarify that the incentive applies to a, a development that provides residential and non-residential uses, but has to have a mix. And so it can't, it can't be just office and commercial uses. It has to have housing. And so some of the other language that's in here is just kind of cleaning up, but the, the substance of it is that it has to have residential in the development to receive the incentive. So it's really just clarifying that language, and that's the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Peter. Any questions? Councilor Bagley.
Thanks, Your Honor. I guess I understand maybe the concern about 50%, but my preference would be to pass it as is and see how things develop.
Sounds good. Or thank you, Councilor Bagley. Councilor Moreau?
Uh, yeah, to follow up on that discussion, when the planning board kind of was pushing towards that, I said that I would actually get sort of a temperature from the council as to whether or not there were enough councillors on board with wanting to take a look at that and see what might, what, you know, if there was a number less than 50% that might get more interest. But at that point, I don't think that we were ready to give them that kind of direction. So if you, if there was enough appetite, that would be, I would be happy to bring it back to the planning board as another item for them to talk about.
In addition to this ordinance, in the future to change?
At a future, yes.
Uh, Councilor Boyler.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Peter. I just think this clears up, you know, and gets us back to our intent. Hopefully, we get some workforce housing out of this.
Uh, Councilor Cook?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I would, I, I think we should go ahead and move forward tonight, but I think that I would entertain the option of looking at the 50% only because I want to make sure that we run the numbers and make sure that this, putting this in place doesn't put us in a position that no one applies to build any affordable housing. We absolutely don't want to be in a position where discouraging that by accident.
Councilor Moreau, did you promise a, like a vote, or just you'll get the temperature?
No, just if there was enough people interested in us taking that exploration, then we can, we can do it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, this could be something that could be contemplated in the larger master plan process and update as well.
Sure. Okay. Now, okay, well, I await a motion for the, oh, sorry, public hearing. Got to have the public hearing. Open the public hearing.
Good evening, council. Good evening, mayor. Jim Smalley, 352 Kearsarchway.
Oh, thank you.
I just want to talk about the 50% open space requirement. I know there's a passion here about providing or making housing more affordable. Councilor Cook, you just indicated where I was going, which is the unintended consequences of this. 50% open space requirement. How does requiring twice as much land as is needed make housing more affordable? How? You don't wear two pairs of shoes here tonight. It's a waste. You're requiring developers spend twice the money on land than is necessary, right? It doesn't make things more affordable. And yes, you will get, you know, the density bonus. You will get additional units built, but you can't just count the units that are built. You have to count the units that are not built. And the only way they're going to be built is if they're economically feasible. That's true regardless of whether you have the density bonus. And where they're not going to be put forth is because you have that additional land requirement, right, the additional burden of cost. And land's not a small component of cost. It's a large one. So yes, the density bonus will work under certain circumstances, but you're actually going to end up with fewer units than you would have had without it. And certainly fewer units, and if you required less land to be set aside. Spending $2 on land, we only need a dollar to put in a unit. If you truly want to make housing more affordable, and I know, Mr. Mayor, you have a passion about the public housing and putting that in place, the, the affordable housing units. Those will work, you know, when the public puts their, their money to it, and we have Portsmouth Housing Authority building those units. But there's no, you have to bend the cost curve outside of that in order for the, for folks who want to live here to stay here. And right now, they're being priced out because of Portsmouth's own zoning policies that make it unaffordable, that drive up the cost artificially. Artificially reducing the supply is what this bonus, the density bonus is about. We need supply, yet here we are saying, let's reduce it. That doesn't increase or make housing more affordable. It drives up the cost. If you have more supply, costs go down, or at least you'll bend the curve. Have you ever stopped to consider that the people who are being priced out of Portsmouth by Portsmouth's own policies don't want the housing designs you put forth? They just want a place to live. It's that simple. They don't need a fancy, necessarily a fancy park. They don't need half the property to be set aside. They just want a place to live. These, we like nice places, but they're not necessarily affordable. They're not necessarily what you or I would buy when we were younger, first starting out. These, the density bonus, it lowers some, the cost of some units, but it raises the cost of all their others. That's how they're paid for. So you're not really lowering the cost of housing, making it more affordable. You're trying to manipulate, and it doesn't work. It fails. It's a bad policy in general. You know, the cost of the, you know, the city of the open door, that open door has a price tag. And this policy does nothing to lower that price tag. Nothing. So think about, as you were pointing to, councillor, the unintended consequences. Why are we requiring spending more when we don't need to? How does it make things more affordable? Period. If it drives up the cost, nix it. So my recommendation would be, please take those into consideration. Find a way to, as you were pointing out, Councilor Moreau, a way to reduce that, set aside that requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Elizabeth, I guess.
Elizabeth Bratter, property owner, 159 McDonough Street. I sent out a quick note. I didn't have time to really look at this in great detail. But the thing that stuck out for me is that the definition of any is considered to be one or some. And what I found interesting is recently is that a developer came before the boards, and they only had to pick one building that had the affordable housing in it. So if you look at 10%, if they were for sale, just to look at numbers, if you look at 10% of 10, that's one affordable unit. If you look at 10% of 30, it would be three. So if you pick the building that has 10 units in it, you're only going to put in one affordable, and all the rest are going to be at market rate. But if you're required to look at all 30 that you're putting in, you're going to have to put in three units at the affordable price. It is true that, as this man stated previously, that the other units will be at market value, which is not cheap, to offset the ones that are going for three, the three that are offset. But no matter what you do, if you don't require the three of the 10% of the whole, you're going to have one, and the rest will be at market value. So it's, if you look at big cities like New York and Boston and stuff like that, they've played this game for a long time. It would be interesting to see how they've been able to get affordable housing. But the reality is, is that every other unit on the lot will be at market rate, and some will be higher because they understand fully that there is a, a high demand for units in Portsmouth because it's a great place to live. But I would caution you to change that word and. But I would caution you to change that word, "any," to something that is more requiring of them, that they have to look at all the units. They have to be inclusive of every unit they build. So if they're putting in 300 units, that's 30. If they're putting in 30 units, it's three. It doesn't seem like much, but when I put my units up for rent, I get lots and lots and lots of calls because we're below market rate. So market rate is too high for most people, and it needs to be looked at. You could lower the community space, but before you do that, I would caution you to look at what community space is. I recently watched a development, and what they're going to try to do is they're going to call their driveway, which is 24 feet wide and I think 160 or 200 feet long, and they're going to call it a multi-modal path, which is connected to nothing. And there is going to be a bike path over 200 feet away, which will never connect to that either. But they're going to use that as their thing because there is no definition, no requirement for how much actually has to be done. For example, the, to Russell Street has a multi-modal path. That will be used because it connects to the bike path. It will connect to the bikes path on Market Street, Market Street Extension, whatever that's called now. It connects. There are many people who are proposing multi-modal paths because the requirement within it is all open-ended. It doesn't have a width requirement. It doesn't have a length requirement. It has no requirements. So you're going to want to look, before you change this, at what those definitions are and how strict they are. Because a lot of people are claiming they're doing community space, but most of us don't even know where that community space is unless they go to all the meetings like I do. So I would highly recommend that you look at community space and make it more clearly defined so that when a developer says, I'm putting in 20% community space, and this is what I'm doing, that it actually benefits the community, and the people in that neighborhood can use it. As opposed to, I put something in, and it covered the requirements, because those are very open-ended. So that's my two cents. I hope you consider them before you move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other speakers? Closing the public hearing. Any additional council questions, deliberations, could use a motion?
Your Honor, I've moved to pass second reading of the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 10, Article 5A, Section 10.5843, spot 33. And to schedule a third and final reading at our August 19th, 2024 City Council meeting.
Second. We'll go to Counselor Bagley, if he had his hand up.
Maybe a question for the city manager or the planning director. There is a definition here of the community space that includes pedestrian passage, wide pedestrian sidewalk, arcades, pocket park, public observation deck, and a requirement because of the large sizes of a plaza or square of about 5,000 square feet. So they would have to conform with those. The public space would have to conform with that paragraph?
I'm going to look to Peter. That list, those options work.
That's part of the section of the ordinance. They would have to provide those.
And then it would be the planning board who would decide if it was in the spirit of the, more or less.
Correct. And we have a whole section on community space types that describes, defines each of these.
Okay. And then just a further comment, you know, I agree with much of what Mr. Smalley said, but I do think that there is a lot of public benefit in the different sidewalks, arcades, the, the observation deck, the potential for those things. So I'd rather see us go about this a little bit more slowly and revisit it, understanding that maybe 50% is not the right number, but I don't think we're going to come up with the right number here tonight.
Counselor Moreau.
I just would like to clarify the comments that were made, and Peter can possibly help me with these answers. The comments were made about the "any," and I believe we're talking about under Section B, where it says workforce housing. The development shall have either 10% of any proposed for-sale dwelling units within a development shall be workforce housing. So the "any" in this case includes any building, anything within the development. So I think it does include all. The way that this is written, it's defensible both for the 5% of any proposed rental units within the development as well.
That's correct. Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear. We're not talking about just any building. We're talking about any units for sale or for rent within the entire development space.
Thank you, Counselor Moreau. Counselor Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have the question, where did the 50% number come from? What was the rationale for that?
What was our rationale? For our, so I'm happy for other folks to, to take a stab at that. I think the rationale in the original proposal for our large acreage, developable parcels in the downtown to have and preserve as much of an open space in those areas. And to Mr. Smalley's point, that comes at expense of housing units. That was the conversation at the time, and I think it specifically focused, this was somewhat in the wake of, you know, the larger parcels. So that's, that's at least the discussion that we had previously, to preserve that open space as a, as a condition of developing large parcels. Counselor, oh, Assistant Mayor, and then Counselor Moreau.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it's also, just to touch on one point, it's very, to me, important that we remember that this was an, an "or," and we were seeing that nobody was choosing workforce housing in the, in the downtown of all the developments that were being, were being sought after. So we were getting some of what we wanted, just more of the open space, the open feel of downtown, but we weren't getting any of the workforce. And so when we were going over this and looking at changing of this ordinance, one of the things that we felt very passionate about was taking away the "or" and making it, you don't get to choose. You have to do both if you're looking for a CUP or anything of, of kind of building some of that density. So I just wanted to remind the public of why you're seeing this shift, in the fact that we were not getting any workforce housing. People were just choosing the open space. So we know that the open space concept works. We just weren't getting the housing that we were looking for.
Counselor Moreau, and then, or Counselor Bullock.
And just to add to that, it was the size of the lots. We only require 50% when you're talking about an existing over-acre lot. So there aren't a lot of those in the city, and it was part of making sure that at least portions of these large lots is still open to the public, right? And that was important, I think, to everyone, that that be part of it. Yep.
Yeah, I was going to kind of read what Counselor Moreau said. And a lot of work went into this, and we, a lot of consideration in, in the community spaces. I know some developments have tried to make some community space that was geared towards more whoever was occupying that development than the public, per se. So I think the planning board is aware of that, and I know, I know I am. But I'm also aware of the supply and demand. I, you know, I majored in economics in school, and if Portsmouth's unique, we have a lot of factors, we could take, we could make it all gateway zoning and remove the historic district, and then prices would be much more affordable. I don't think that's what Portsmouth wants. This is a small step to try to incentivize some developers to give some affordable units. Yes, they wouldn't be able to develop the whole property on, on market rate, but our goal here is to try to get something below market rate. Where currently, right now, they, they could just develop it at market rate without that additional floor.
Any other comments? All right. We will have. Motion's on the floor. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Next up, public hearing, second reading of proposed parking on the bus ordinance, amending Chapter 7, Article 3, traffic ordinance, Section 7.330A, no parking, Article 3, traffic ordinance, Section 7.341, driving on sidewalks, and Article 11, Section 7.1100E, speed limits 25 miles an hour, Middle Street.
Your Honor, we have both Eric Eby and Ben Fletcher from our Public Works Department on Zoom. Eric's going to provide a very brief verbal presentation, and Ben is also available to answer any questions. I don't know where they went. They became panelists, and let's see if they... Eric, are you able to, to jump in now?
Yes, I can hear you. You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Good evening, city councilors, the city manager. This is Eric Eby, traffic engineer for the city of Portsmouth. And just very quickly, I'll go over, there are three sections of Chapter 7 ordinance that are on for changes. The first section is dealing with no parking, and that's on Greenland Road and Islington Street. And these two are the streets that abut the new skate park. This was put in to keep people from parking out on the streets, incentivize them to park in the parking lot for the skate park. And the third item under no parking is on Mechanic Street, and that is because the Mechanic Street is very narrow down by the waterfront and south end. This was to allow emergency vehicles and trash trucks and other vehicles to get around those corners on Pickering and Mechanic. The second section of the ordinance that's being changed is to amend who can drive on the sidewalk, just to specify that not only vehicles, but electric bikes, electric scooters, electric skateboards, and electric unicycles are all banned from riding on sidewalks. That's a safety measure. We don't want the mix of high-speed vehicles with pedestrians on sidewalks. And the last item is a change to speed limits, and this is on Middle Street, where we're changing the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. It had been 30, and it's down to 25 now. And all of these changes have been in place with signage for up to a year or more, so we have not received any pushback from the public on any of these, and so they've gone well, and that's why we have brought them forward for approval by the city council now.
Thanks, Eric.
Any questions? Counselor Lombardi, and then Counselor Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the, these are really good amendments to the parking and traffic ordinances. I think that the 25 mile an hour speed limit on many streets is really excellent. It's, a lot of people follow it, and, and that's good, but there are also a lot of people who don't. And I guess, my wife and I walk along Middle Road on our evening walk, and cars are going 40, at least 40 miles an hour on Middle Road. So there's an, there's an enforcement issue that needs to take place in order to actually make this ordinance workable.
Counselor Cook, then Counselor Moreau.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Counselor Bagley for moving very quickly with our traffic engineer a year ago, when there were major parking problems on Mechanic Street that blocked not just emergency vehicles, but any vehicles from traveling down the road. They stepped in quickly to resolve this problem, which really solved that emergency vehicle question in that neighborhood. And usually, I live halfway up a block from Mechanic Street. And usually in our neighborhood, people complain when parking is taken away because it's so scarce, and there are a lot of individuals who don't have parking at their homes. But in this case, the neighborhood has been very pleased and very thankful that the Parking and Traffic Safety Committee moved so quickly. So, thank you.
Counselor Moreau.
I'm pretty sure this is supposed to be Middle Road and not Middle Street, because Middle Street, I thought, had been 25 for several years now, but Middle Road last year was what, we moved down from 30 to 25.
Right. It is Middle Road.
So I think it's supposed to say Middle Road, not Middle Street. Do we have to put that through?
That is correct.
It is a completely different road, so.
It's an expert-level catch. Counselor Moreau, you've outdone yourself on that. We're getting to see what's in the packet and what has, more importantly, been noticed. Where's the picture? And then there's the...
It's, what's in here says Middle Street, but I do believe the picture...
It says Middle Street in the, in the ordinance itself.
But it's Middle Road in the description.
It's definitely Middle Road where we changed it.
Yep. Legal inquiry, is this a material change? Since the picture and map clearly represents the correct...
It says Middle Street, but it's Middle Road.
...street in the ordinance?
I think you've given sufficient notice with the map.
Okay.
That you, what your intention is.
So we'll make an amendment to change this, but we won't require a second reading, but amendment. I'd wait, okay, first we got to have the public hearing, but then we'll, when we do that, we will make a, anybody rising too far against this proposed amendment? Going once, going twice, closing the public hearing. Any additional questions or possibly a motion?
Your Honor, I moved to pass second reading and schedule, schedule third and final reading at the August 18th, 2024 City Council meeting. 19th. I gotta put my glasses on. With Middle Street being Middle Road. Yes. Just need a second.
Second.
All right. So as we understand it, motion is to also include Middle Road rather than Middle Street.
That's correct.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bagley.
Your Honor, just because it was touched upon, in the state of New Hampshire, there's an RSA that the speed limits are 30 miles per hour, and we can only lower them to 25 miles per hour after we do an engineering study. So there's been a lot of requests, could we have a town-wide 25 mile per hour speed limit, which I would fully support, but legally, we have to go about it in a, one engineering study at a time.
And is that for just a, for all towns and cities?
It's a New Hampshire statute.
Regardless of whether or not they are an urbanly populated area or the...
There, there are some nuances, and maybe Eric Eby could speak to it, but basically, to just do a blanket 25 mile per hour throughout the town, city of Portsmouth is not understood to be within our power. Eric, yeah, he's unmuted. I think he's going to add something here.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah. It's, it's 25 miles an hour if you've done an engineering study to support that. Sometimes the engineering study can come back and say you should raise your speed limit, so you don't always get what you asked for when you do an engineering study.
Noted. All right. Well, I see one representative from our delegation here, Jennifer Mountlebaum in the area, so if we, if we take that up as the State House to change that for municipalities, I'm sure it would welcome a lot of support in Portsmouth. Counselor Bullock.
I'm just really confused because the picture is Middle Street.
I just realized that.
And it's labeled Middle Street. I, I drive on Middle Road, two Middle Streets. I'm very aware with the distinction here, but the picture is Middle Street, it's not Middle Road.
Oh, okay.
So it is the wrong street.
Yeah, Middle Street starts, Middle Road starts here.
Yeah, Middle Road almost didn't make the map.
Yeah.
It almost isn't even on the map.
Can we continue this to August 19th?
So it is?
As advertised, we're changing the, the speed limit on Middle Street, which is already 25.
That would change my legal opinion.
All right, well, we'll...
You guys are too good at this.
It's just my route to work.
Re-advertised.
Yes, yeah. I was like, I gotta look at this again.
Do we need action?
Can we just postpone Portsmouth or postpone all?
I'd wait a motion to postpone to August 19th. So moved?
Second.
And re-advertised with the correct.
Okay. Do we need to make an amendment to change that or no?
To make it Middle Road? Right, because it's not...
I thought Middle Road was included.
No.
It's supposed to be Middle Road, not Middle Street.
Yep.
All right. We'll postpone and make the adjustment. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We're on to City Manager Connard's items which require action.
Great. Thank you, Your Honor. First item would be to request a schedule of work session to discuss the revaluation, and we would propose to do that on an off-meeting night, which would be Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m. City assessor Roseanne Lentz will have data on hand, and the night before, we will hold our taxpayer informational meeting on how to understand the revaluation at 5:00 p.m. on September 4th.
Your Honor, I move to schedule a work session on the topic of their reevaluation on Thursday, September 5th, 2024, at 5:00 p.m.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just worry, I won't be able to attend that evening.
Understood. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Next is the long-awaited update, rewrite of our local emergency operations plan, and I have the pleasure of serving as the emergency management director, along with emergency management coordinator, Fire Chief Phil McQuillan, who took the lead on this effort to completely update and renew our local emergency operations plan in conjunction with a consultant out of New Hampshire called Mapping and Planning Solutions. This took hours and hours and hours of all the staff that are involved in, in what we put forward to help us with both grants and really with basic preparedness for a variety of situations. So Fire Chief McQuillan's here tonight. So Fire Chief McQuillan is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. This, we're really proud of this work. And you may notice that the last time this was completely updated was 2017. We did start the process in 2022 to update this. There was a flow of funds issued from Homeland Security with the FEMA funding. And as such, we were able to complete this as soon as the funding was in place.
Your Honor, I move to adopt the proposed local emergency operations plan as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Bagley.
I just wanna, I mean, I guess it's about 200 pages in the packet.
Huge.
And it's really well detailed and laid out. And you really seem to have covered just about everything you could possibly think of in an emergency. So just kind of applaud the effort. Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Number three would be a request to appoint the gentleman who's been serving as our acting or de facto motor vehicle agent. That would be our deputy tax collector, Ed Gioso, who's been serving in that capacity since our tax collector Nancy Bates left the city. And so the request here tonight is to honor and formalize that title for Ed to serve as the city's motor vehicle agent.
I would move, Your Honor, to approve the appointment of Deputy Tax Collector Edward Gioso, Gioyo Oso, as the municipal registration agent for motor vehicles in the city.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Cook.
Your Honor, I just had a question. Do we anticipate having a new tax collector in place at some time?
We do have a new tax collector in place. Her name is Amy Wentworth, and I believe she's been on the job for, she's in her second month, I believe. Five weeks, I think I just got the five-week sign. Amy's doing well. But in the transition between Nancy and Amy, Ed stepped in to be, to serve as motor vehicle agent, so we're just gonna keep him in that capacity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Number four is an update on where we stand with the disposition of municipal property at 35 Sherburne Road. As you all well know, we issued a request for letters of interest and statements of qualifications in May, and we were excited to get eight responses. And the four that scored the highest by our internal works, by our internal selection committee, which consisted of folks from Public Works, Facilities, Planning and Sustainability, Economic and Community Development, Inspections and Legal, are the four listed in your packet. They are listed alphabetically here. And what we would like to do is move forward at this point to get a better sense of what could actually be built from a conceptual stage at this time, to put forth an RFP to the four forms that scored the highest. And the questions we have to be considered by the council this evening would speak to the disposition of the existing building and whether this council would be comfortable honoring the recommendation moved forward by staff to show two different ways to conceive of redevelopment of the site. One that would reuse the existing building and another that would show redevelopment without the existing building. And we really want to get your feedback on not only that concept, but also to understand if there is a preference for the mix and type of housing, given the way we understand for financing to be in place, that we are recommending these be rental units with a mix of income levels. And the question we have to the council is if there is an acceptance for fair market rate housing in the mix that would help support and offset some of the lower income eligibility and qualifications. And we're looking for taking your temperature on a ground lease, which we understand is palatable and suitable by all the interested developers. We wanted to get your feedback on whether there were other elements to the open space or the community space or recreation needs that might need to be achieved at the space. And if this is all palatable to the council, we would move forward with an RFP this month in fairly short order. So I'll stop there.
Thanks, City Manager. Assistant Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. One of the things I just want to discuss is the housing committee. And I know the housing committee has some, we were meeting on Thursday, and they have some input that I would like to make sure to bring forward to the city manager's office when it comes to what we are really looking for in an RFP. And I know that they, that committee wants to be very actively involved, as much as they can, with recommendations. So I will work on getting some recommendations out of those and getting those to your office. My question is, my second question is, when we initially made the motion to start the disposition of Sherburne School, we did it for permanently below market rate housing. Since we made that motion for, would we even be allowed to have a percentage of housing there that would not be below market rate? My impression was when we said below market rate, it would allow for us to have mixed level of income, up to potentially 100% of local AMI and downwards of, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50%. So that would be a question for your office in legal because the original motion had permanently below market rate.
And I think the way I would respond to that is, I think of it as permanent, come up below market rate housing. It didn't say exclusively below market rate housing. So I would look to the council to help determine whether that is. And maybe the housing committee would like to give feedback on that as well.
Okay.
Counsel Tabor, Counsel Cook.
Thanks, Mayor. Just thought I'd share some thoughts on this. I think the city managers presented a good path to go in a rapid manner. I mean, the goal here is to use this land as the big opportunity that we have for permanent affordable housing, and that was the recommendation of our housing committee. If we're gonna have an impact, we know that the market can create lots of additional housing units. We see those projects in the paper. We could create thousands of units from the private sector, but the rents will stay high. The rents will stay high because of demand. And if we're gonna make an impact, we have to, we have to create below-market-rate housing like we have here. I think we're gonna need healthy density in this property to make an impact. I would personally like to see at least 80 units. And I think if we do that, we begin to, we can't both keep the ball field and the school. And those are questions that you had posed to us. To me, the ball field is the one that can yield. We know the city's creating replacement. I don't think this is a very intensely-used ball field. It's my recollection that we don't have adult leagues using it. So it's, there'll be no net loss of softball fields for the adult leagues. I think there's a good case to let the school go, too, in terms of master planning. But then, you know, I thought, boy, if we do that, we can get more density. But I think you also have to think about what's the experience of living there? And some kind of community center, if that building could be used for daycare or classes, maybe even some mixed use like a convenience store. I think those are worth exploring. And the city manager has rightly said, let's have an RFP process that allows a proposal with the school and a proposal without the school. And I think we should take that path. I like the idea of leasing because that allows us to enforce over 99 years the permanent below-market status. And then the question of some market rate units to enable us to afford below 80%, maybe 50% of average income. We need housing at all income levels. And I think it's a disservice to just say, all we can do is 80%. So I think if we allow some market rate housing and see what these nonprofit developers can create for us, I think that we should give them that ability to do that. Because it allows us to serve all income levels without having to subsidize it. So those are some thoughts, and we'll see what the others say.
Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to show that it would be my preference that all housing on this site be below market rate. That I would not want to see market rate housing, because we have market rate housing throughout the city. We have very little opportunity to develop below-market rate housing. We have very few parcels that the city owns that we can go enter into long-term lease, which would be my preference as well, with some sort of provision to protect below-market rate housing for the long term, impermanence is the goal. That's why we have in the past partnered with the housing authority, because they get federal grants to build this housing. And those federal grants stipulate that they stay, that the housing remains below market rate. I would not want to, I think we should be really careful, I guess, when we're considering partnering with anyone who would not be renting at this entire scale of the market. Because I think that that's one of the healthy provisions of a housing authority and of housing law in the country, is that you cannot turn away somebody who needs affordable housing. So your unit may be a workforce unit that rents at 80% of market rate, but you can't turn away somebody who wants to rent that property and who only can afford 60%. So that's the important provision that we have in federal law with vouchers, with housing vouchers. And we need to be mindful of that as well. So that would be my concern with this property, is I don't want to see market rate housing. We have plenty of it in the city.
Thank you, Counsel Cook. I'm gonna go over to Counsel Bagley and then Counsel Boylak, and then I saw Counsel Moreau and Counsel Lombardi. But I did see Counsel, all right, we'll let you get last, we'll stay on that side. All right, Counseler.
Thank you, Your Honor. I generally agree with the stipulations in here. I think the 99-year lease makes the most sense. Our grandchildren and great-grandchildren can decide what to do with the property. Once that's up, the city retains ownership. But everybody can build something for long and, you know, permanent use. I would say, you know, I hadn't considered market rate housing as, because that's not the problem we're trying to solve. And I would love to see us focus on workforce housing because I think even though we could use all types of housing, that's where we have the fewest number of units in the city currently. But I am open to the idea of a mixed use. All of the kind of socioeconomic studies that I've read have said with housing, you want to have a diversity of income levels. So if we did have a couple market rate housing units, I'd be okay with that because you're now kind of creating a stratification of different socioeconomic levels in the same development. And I think there might be some benefit to that, even albeit at the cost of a few below-market rate housing units. Obviously, I would prefer to see just a small number, but I think there could be some benefit to that. I would probably lean towards not saving the Sherburne School. I think we could get a really good plan that envelops the best community if you start with kind of a fresh design and you don't have to work around something that's already there because the school kind of blocks the view of where the housing would be. And I think that might be hard to develop something that really feels like it's part of the fabric of the community. But I do applaud the city for thinking or for going for both design choices. So in theory, we would have eight designs to pick from, and whatever the best one is would kind of rise to the top. To that, when we looked at the initial request for qualifications, I actually had a couple more that were not selected that I thought could potentially do a good job. So I would not be opposed if we requested from the four that were selected this RFP, but we left it open. We didn't invite anybody else, but we said if anybody else wants to apply, whether they applied initially or not, they're welcome to submit their proposals as well. Thank you.
Counsel Bagley, Counsel Boylak.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think there is some sentiment to holding the school. I understand, keeping the school, I obviously understand that puts limitations on the project. So I would like to see both options. I feel like there is, you know, that's kind of a Portsmouth tradition, taking old schools and turning it into housing. But I understand the restrictions. I do think the building still has good bones, so there might be some economic value to the housing. I, as the city manager stated, we're currently, this fiscal year, gonna build a new ball field. I actually think it'd be an improvement for the softball. There's no shade currently on that field. You're right next to a highway. It's not ideal. This way, they're gonna have a turf field. They won't have to, you know, worry about rain as much. There's more shade over there. It's by the other fields. So I think that, I'm not concerned so much with the ball field. I'm glad to see that the companies all selected are somewhat local, Portland, Boston, Portsmouth. Obviously, the more local is gonna be more appealing to me and more attractive, just because we have more of a history. Because not only building the project, but also managing it, I think that's an important aspect of it. We want someone that we know we can trust and is gonna stick around for the 99-year lease and manage it well and not, you know, take off and be done once they, once they put the last brick up. But yeah, those are my kind of two cents right now.
Counsel Boylak, Counsel Moreau, Counsel Lombardi.
Um.
Counsel Denton, sorry, Bud.
My thoughts start with, I agree that the long-term lease is the way to go to make sure that the city maintains the ownership for the long term, to ensure that even into the future, we get to make the decision on how that land is used. I've gone back and forth about the school. I agree the softball field, we're gonna replace it. And the high school's even working on getting more softball field use. So I think that we have some good plans to replace that. The schools are harder one. I guess in my mind, I really saw it as being a great place where there could be a community center, there could be childcare, there could be, you know, things that, other items that the city in the development and even the adjoining neighborhoods could all benefit from. If someone made a really good argument as to taking down the school and why it would make it more fit into the neighborhood, then I'd say, let's hear what that is. I also feel that the, strongly about the four that have got it, I don't know legally if we could open it up to just anyone because there are requirements around the initial one as far as you had to actually, you know, participate in the sidewalk and whatnot. I would say if others out of the other four that submitted proposals wanted to try to submit, then that, I think, would open. I don't know if I would feel comfortable opening it up to just anyone out there being able to reply to that. So I would have, take issue to that. On the income levels, I would love to see all rentals and all mixed income. But in my mind, mixed income goes up to 100% AMI, right? So that's still below market. It's below the market that we have. So I think if it's a fully mixed income project, that it'll help make it more affordable for the development. So I am on board in doing that, and I think that's it. I think I hit all my high points.
Counsel Moreau, thank you. Counsel Moreau, Counsel Lombardi.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, there's, I agree that, I think the, getting the opportunity to look at multiple ways of using this property is a real advantage. There is, I agree that the softball field is probably ideal for some development. The, one of the problems with tearing down a building is that it's an ecological disaster. And that's one of the reasons to actually keep a building. But on the same token, if we can get a higher number of workforce or multi-variable income units, all under the 100% AMI, I would really like to see that. I would like to see as many as we can on that site. We need them. And there's ample opportunity for developers to create market rate housing. And this being a city property with a long-term lease, it's a way that we can, long into the future, if the needs change, we have the opportunity to do that. But I can see, at least from our perspective at this time, we really need market rate or non-market rate housing, workforce housing. It's a, you know, a subject that hits the Economic Development Commission constantly is that people need employees. And I think that it's really important to really maximize the affordable -- maximize the affordable housing opportunity there.
And Councilor Lombardi.
Thank you. I agree with the mixed income level up to a hundred percent, and I understand why we would request it be considered both keeping the school itself and not keeping the school itself, but in my mind, I would much rather keep the school and allow what's built behind the school on the ball field to be more dense.
Yeah, I have one more point. And I know the one question was, would we be amenable to them asking for money for the city to help do this? I'd be less amenable to that. I don't, I feel like we're giving them land, a lease, that's what we're giving them. So if they come back to us, so the economics don't work, you know what I mean, I'd be more, have more of an appetite for the mixed income than having to ask the city for money to subsidize the project. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You're on it just one. I think it's important to highlight that when the RFQ went out, we were, we were, it's been very clear, you know, what the cities, the city is looking to contribute, which is land. And, you know, doing research on this four finalists, they all use, you know, federal tax credits. They're all used to working in partnership with the different communities. Penrose, for instance, has worked with over like twenty different communities all, all through the, the East Coast, so they're used to dealing with affordable and below market rate housing in conjunction with municipality. So I would assume that any of these developers who decide to put in an RFP would understand that there's not city capital besides the land being put up.
Councilor Lombardi.
All right, just another question in terms of infrastructure. Are the, are these RFPs asking for the infrastructure improvements as well?
That's part of this discussion, and we can, we can put that specific language in the RFP.
Okay, good.
And at the risk of amending the motion I proposed to you all, perhaps it makes sense to get the feedback from the Housing Committee before we fully bake and start to draft an RFP.
I'm, I, I think that would be best if, if that, if the council is amenable to that, then I can make that in the motion. Any more comments? Okay. I move to authorize the city manager, how do I want to say this?
Do you want to bring a report back to the next meeting, Assistant?
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Wait, so we're not going to have the RFP until the nineteenth now? Is that it?
Yes.
The idea would be that the RFP to, to be written would incorporate the comments and recommendations from the Housing Committee, which we could hear in a report back from the council reps on the Housing Committee.
On the nineteenth.
On the nineteenth, yeah.
I guess.
Or we could, we could say moved up, off the, well, I guess we want to make sure that the council.
So is there, so I guess like from a standpoint of the, I don't think that anything that the council has said tonight will be contradicted by the Housing Committee. I think that in terms of AMI and things like that, I would think it would, I'd rather be able to save the time of the two weeks and also then have the feedback from the Housing Committee on the RFP selections more formally. Does that make sense?
It does. I, I just know that the members of, of the Housing Committee really want to be, so could we just, would the council be okay if the, if, if the Housing Committee wrote a memo to the city manager and that was also distributed to, and if there's any major changes, that that could be flagged and discussed, or if there's any major differences? I just think we, we reestablished the housing, the Affordable Housing Committee, and they really have worked hard and set an aggressive goal, and I think we, there's a lot of hands up.
It does. There's a lot of hands. I'll just say that typically, when we create RFPs, they're at the discretion of the city management and the city manager. So while she's gotten our input here, I'm sure she would include input of the Housing Committee going forward if the Housing Committee so sought to send that information to the officer.
So then the city attorney just came up with a great amendment, which says, prepare an issue in RFP to the four entities interviewed, which encompasses the feedback received this evening and from the Housing Committee.
And that's what I was going to say, yes. Okay.
So when I see a lot of hands come up, there's an obvious answer to something that everybody knows but me. Got it. Noted for the future.
So, so, Your Honor, I, I make the motion to authorize the city manager to prepare and issue a, our, a request for proposals for the four entities interviewed, which encompasses the feedback received this evening by the council and also the memo that will be drafted by the Housing Committee.
Great. Is there a second?
A second and then a question.
Okay.
When does the Housing Committee meet?
Thursday.
Thursday.
We've, we've been, this has been a, a hot conversation, so.
Okay, Councilor Boylock.
Could the council also receive that memo or?
Oh, yeah.
Happily, yeah.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Okay, so I'll just state, I think that we've reached a good spot here. I, when it comes to the building, I think that, you know, if we don't include plans to not knock down the building and replace it, we're going to always be lost to what could have been. So either, you know, having both, I think is a good, even if the preference is to preserve the history, we have to know what we, we'd give up to preserve that history. And I'd also like to see if there's, you know, ways to imagine that building in different ways that potentially aren't housing that could build more on the community. When it came to the other kind of, and leases and all that, that seems reasonable. When it came to the question of AMI, you know, I think that one of the biggest things that we felt, and going back to, to the meeting was maybe, it's not very clear what we talked about when we talked about workforce housing. Were we talking about public housing? You know, there's a lot of, not everybody spends as much time thinking about this, and why should they spend as much time thinking about this? They let people think about it, but I think if there was more varied incomes, it would take away one of those concerns of, you know, like if there were market rate apartments there and people chose to live them, how could you make any claim that this would detract property values? That being said, you know, I think one of the speakers said earlier, if we want to get in the market rate business, I think we've got plenty of tools to do that, and that's just zoning and changing zoning. I really think that the city should spend most of its attention when it comes to parcels that we have partnering to build below market rate housing and focus on changing zoning to allow more of that density that exists elsewhere. So look forward to hearing what you guys in the Housing Committee come back with. Thank you for the service on that and for all the citizens that have signed up for that. Thank you, City Manager, for running these pretty exhaustive qualifications and now RFP.
Did we have a second? I just want to make sure.
I think we did have a second, this Councilor Bagley, and then he said he had a question. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Great. Number five.
Next one.
We get to welcome folks here who have made a proposal for the redevelopment of the South Meeting House. So I would like to welcome David Schlyer, Russ Grazer, and Eli Keener, who are here in support of the proposal that they've submitted from the Schlyer Foundation, which includes Chinburg Builders, Arkov Architects, and the Portsmouth Music and Art Center. So that the end result could be the foundation proposing a significant investment in this structure along with an ongoing maintenance program, which is very important, and the Schlyer Foundation has recently expanded its mission to preserve local history while strengthening the vibrancy of communities through historic renovations that benefit the nonprofit sector, and this seems to be a perfect example of that. The end result would be to support PMAC's work to provide classroom and studio space, teaching gallery space, artist studios, and an administrative office, and the city feels strongly that the proposal received is sound and reasonable. And with your concurrence this evening, we'd like to move forward and bring back a formal agreement to you.
All right.
So I'd like to move to authorize the city manager to begin the negotiation of documents necessary to implement the proposal and to schedule a public meeting for the Schlyer Foundation to share its concept with the public and gather input.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Moreau.
I got the opportunity as the former chair of the Demolition Review Committee to sit and listen to a lot of people talk about the Cary Cottage and to find the people that were able to actually save the Cary Cottage to step up and want to do the same for this building. Warms my heart, and I want to say thank you. Because that was a lot of late nights listening to people talk about the Cary Cottage, and it just, you know, there was a lot of people that wanted to save it, and I'm just so glad it happened, and thank you, and the partnership with PMAC is awesome. Russ and Katie will do an awesome job keeping this going and staying on top of everything. I think it's the best team that we could ask for to give us a proposal and move forward. So thank you to everyone involved.
Councilor Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I, I kind of want to first thank Councilor Denton, who kind of got this thing going as acting, or the commander of the VFW. When his first proposal came out, we received an email from one of the residents in the South End. Councilor Cook and I met with a couple of those residents and then to see what it seems to have turned into. We couldn't have asked for a better outcome, I don't think. You know, we've had a number of nonprofits partner with the city in the past and currently, and I don't think we're getting our highest and best utilization in some cases, but in this case, I mean, just looking through the packet, the, the people who are participating, the reputation that they have in the city, the amount of good work they've already done in the city, the, the financial commitment that they're making, I mean, this is just about as outstanding as it gets, and I just want to thank everybody who is part of this process to come up with such a great proposal.
Councilor Boylock.
Thank you, Your Honor. I couldn't agree more. I think we really lucked out, got a team on this, and to preserve this building is so huge. I mean, to give, you know, PMAC a home and to have the financial contributions and have Chinburg on board, this is a total win. I'm just very excited for the community as a whole, and I can thank everyone involved.
Councilor Tabor.
Thanks, Your Honor. I, I think we all, I feel really comfortable about voting this to move forward because we've already seen what this team can do with Cary Cottage, the sensitivity to the historic preservation. We know that that will happen with the, this architect and with Chinburg, the financial stability of PMAC. The use is a, is a good fit for the neighborhood. It's not too intensive, but it is really enhancing our creative community by creating a place that bring out of classes for the visual arts. So it's just a win-win all around with the players we all know and have seen their good work, so.
Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. While I am not a direct butter to this property, I do live in the neighborhood, and I live close enough that I walk by the property usually every day, and I echo everything that's been said here, but I'll also say that the biggest concern for the neighborhood has always been that this building is preserved and protected, that it's restored to, to looking the way it should, the way it did when it was originally built by the city in eighteen sixty-six, because that replaced the original Meeting House that was there that was torn down by the city in eighteen sixty-three. I think that space has always been a community space, and this proposal basically brings that back to being a community space. And I think that that's been one of the biggest concerns that that neighborhood has experienced over the past many years because the doors have been closed and there hasn't been access by the community, and, and we've kind of sat and watched the building deteriorate slowly. So thank you for submitting a proposal that will save that building and really help benefit not just the community that lives right around it, but the entire city of Portsmouth.
It's a great proposal. I would be remiss if I didn't say that although it was likely a stretch to get through all the hoops, and I think represented in the letter saying that it wasn't, that this won't be pursued by the VFW, both as a meeting house and a place to provide housing for veterans in need of that, especially given our longstanding history, in many ways, you know, founded for and by veterans. It is, it's a little bittersweet because I think that would have sent a great message, and I want to commend Councilor Denton for, along with Jonathan Day, for putting that, and maybe we will honor our veterans in a way they're deserving at some point in the future. But I thank you for the, the impetus and, and for the service. This is a great opportunity, and I know that PMAC is going to benefit from this, but the community will benefit greatly from this. It's nothing, nothing short of a, a perfect storm coming together and look forward to, you know, hopefully getting some light acoustic music out on the lawn, obviously, you know, not upsetting too many folks, but I could see that, and it'll be great to, to bring my daughter inside that building and point out where the submarine used to be, so if you can incorporate that somehow. I think that's part of the HTC's charge is to make sure that that submarine stays in some fashion, but I will also be supporting this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number six is a request to schedule a public hearing regarding the need for a supplemental appropriation for the Hanover Street Garage project. As you all are aware, we are in year, just starting year three of a three-year construction project. At the time we bid this, there was, there was really a different economic picture, and as such, an additional one million is in funding is needed to finish the project due to material and labor prices escalation, and per the contract, those prices are adjusted annually. Some unforeseen conditions we encountered during construction, most notably, the, some parts of the garage were in worse condition than we initially anticipated, and as we moved through the project, we found additional work that would allow and support greater pedestrian access and traffic flow improvements, which made sense to staff to incorporate at this time. So what we are looking to do is to use Parking Division fund balance to provide the funding for this, and we would ask that the council move to schedule a public hearing and vote to authorize at the next council meeting.
Your Honor, I move to schedule a public hearing and vote to authorize a supplemental appropriation of one million from the Parking Division fund balance.
Second.
Any discussion that won't be held at the public hearing when we talk about this again? I mean, we can talk about it now, too, but they're asking for it. We should have the public weigh-in. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item seven is from our esteemed city clerk Barnaby regarding establishment of polling hours for the state primary on September tenth and the presidential election on November fifth.
Your Honor, I move to approve the polling hours as presented. September tenth, state primary election be established from eight AM to seven PM, and polling hours be expanded for the presidential general election on November fifth from eight AM to eight PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Kelly. Oh, Councilor Denton.
Just want to thank Kelly because for, I think, eight years, there's been a push to expand the hours to eight o'clock, and having been both a poll worker and a poll observer and everything else, I understand the long days, but just that additional hour means a lot to people, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Kel. Not going to be an easy day. You and the team are ready.
We'll be ready.
You'll be ready. Councilor Boylock.
Yeah, I'll reiterate, Councilor Denton, I think it's, I grew up with a mother that commuted from Boston, and if she hit traffic, sometimes she would miss voting, or, you know, coaches that if they have practice after school and then they, you know, they don't make it. So I think this is just extending, giving everyone an opportunity.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your Honor, before I turn the agenda back to you, Eric Eby made the astute observation in double-checking the ordinance that Middle Road was approved in a past year and that Middle Street is the correct item on this year's omnibus.
Get out of here.
Because it was only approved by PTS in July of twenty twenty-three, and therefore we did notice it correctly. It is Middle Street, so with your indulgence, perhaps we could go back to item ten B.
I would love to not have that come up again.
Okay. There you go. Okay. There you go.
All right, so we have ourselves to suspend, well, we have to suspend the rules, vote to suspend the rules to.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
And to take up a item previously postponed to a, the next meeting. Yep, to do that.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have in front of us the, the public hearing second reading of proposed parking omnibus ordinance amending chapter seven, article three, traffic ordinances, section 7.330A, no parking, article three, traffic ordinance, section 7.341, driving on sidewalk, and article 11, section 7.1100E, speed limits 25 miles per hour, Middle Street.
Your Honor, I move to pass second reading and schedule third and final reading at the August 19th, 2024 city council meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Your Honor?
We didn't have a public hearing, did we?
We did.
We did have the public hearing, yes.
Wanted to make sure.
I would motion to suspend the rules and take up third and final reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass.
Move to pass third reading, third and final reading of.
Second.
Parking omnibus ordinance amending chapter seven, article three, traffic ordinance, section 7.330A, no parking, article three, traffic ordinance, section 7.341, driving on sidewalk, and article 11, section 7.1100E, speed limits 25 miles per hour, Middle Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thanks, Eric. You can go now.
Yeah, Eric, jeez.
So many catches.
That one, we caught ourselves. Okay. We are now on to the consent agenda.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, now we have presentations and written communications. We have email correspondence.
Move to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, a letter from James Knutson, Knutson Burbidge, regarding estate of Star C. Johnson, parcel at map 232, lot 25 on Marjory Street, expressing their intention to donate the parcel to the city.
I make a motion, we move to refer to the planning board for a report back.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Letter from, CEO, a letter from Derek R. Durbin Esquire regarding release of interest in map 236, lot 74 for the area of former Long Meadow Lane.
Your Honor, I move to refer to the planning board for recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, letter from residents of Islington Creek regarding zoning of 361 Hanover Street.
Your Honor, I move to accept and place on file. Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Moreau, oh?
Nope, she can go. I'm sure we're here. And I know there's been a lot of, and I was on the planning board at the time, but I wasn't at those meetings because I was a neighbor and so I had to recuse from all those discussions. So I hadn't, I really actually thought we had changed the zoning. It was a shock even to me to come to the realization that it hadn't been changed. So if it's appropriate, I would be more than happy to put it under my name on the agenda for August 19th to request that the planning board, unless we want to do that right now, we could request that the planning board look at altering that lot to be more conforming to its adjacent lots.
I'd second that amendment.
No reason we can't do it. Councilor Cook?
I absolutely support this. I had it on my list of things to bring back to the next, next council meeting. I think it's really critical that we ask the planning board to look at this and see if it's appropriate because they didn't finish their deliberations around it.
Right.
Now, Attorney McCourt said we don't even have to ask them, but you suggest that we...
Not that I would disagree ever with Deputy Attorney McCourt.
Did somebody said that about Attorney McCourt?
I think that we can ask for the change, but we still have to refer to the planning board for their recommendation. Yeah. Am I wrong? I think I'm going to get schooled. I know. He just wants to fix me.
No, you're absolutely correct, Counselor. I think there was just a little miscommunication. What I was trying to say is, is that it, it could, it doesn't have to start at the planning board. It could start here. Either path is totally appropriate.
And we can accept citizen requests to ask, request the planning board.
Certainly. Either, either the city council or the planning board could accept a citizen request to conduct some rezoning. Absolutely.
So the motion on the floor is to refer to this, refer to this letter and the proposed changings to the planning board for consideration?
For a report back, or consideration of a change.
Okay. Kel, you got most of that? All right.
We already.
What?
Had the original motion on the floor, though, right, to accept and place on file?
Oh.
I think you did.
You did, okay.
We did, but we could, if the, we asked for an amendment of that.
Yeah, I can rescind my motion.
Motion by Councilor Boeck, rescinded. Councilor Moreau, the second by the system mayor.
System mayor.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, a letter from Eleanor, Eleanor Byrd regarding the loud noises created by the fireworks.
Your Honor, I move to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A letter in petition from Lucille Thirnand and residents of Connor's Cottage regarding the proposed expansion of the police station.
Your Honor, I move to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Letter from Abigail Jendel requesting the city eliminate mosquito spraying.
Your Honor, I move to accept and place on file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, appointments to be considered. Scott Shodan to the Recreation Board for next meeting, reappointment of Deborah Chang to the Trees and Public Greenery, Chag to the Trees and Public Greenery Committee, resignations. So this is for next, we have resignations of Robin Alper from the Arts and Cultural Commission and Mary Liz Geffert, M.L. Geffert, as an alternate to the zoning board of adjustment.
Your Honor, I move to accept with regret the resignations of Robin Albert and Mary Liz Geffert with letter of thanks and appreciation for their service to the city.
Second.
Certainly be missed on that. Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say that I had, I was fortunate enough to serve with Robin Albert on the Arts and Nonprofits Committee and then on the Arts and Cultural Commission. But that wasn't the first service that Robin's done for the city. Robin has worked in, in the arts and in the arts community the entirety of her career in the city of Portsmouth. And she will be deeply missed. I don't know how we will do the after-study without her. So, so thank you to Robin for all of her hard work.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, just, I wanted to set us the indoor sports complex, speaking with the city manager. And I do recall that this, you know, it was in some update in the packet, but no other SAU 52 community wanted to do it with public land that they had. So had had a number of folks reach out, independent, and in no way is this a direct response to this story in the Herald, but there was an opportunity to, to move this forward. And whether that means to resolution or to decide not to do that, I think getting a, the feedback from the rec board around this is the best place to start that conversation and would like to see that if possible.
Your Honor, I'll move to refer to the Recreation Board for a report back on the status of the indoor sports complex.
Second.
And I'll just speak a little bit to it. Obviously, the, I mean, I personally have wanted this to happen for years. Our issue is space, buildable land. I know a lot of people were hopeful this was going to go at community campus. Unfortunately, community campus is surrounded by wetlands and the wetland buffer zone did not allow that project to happen there. But I do drive by that Water Country property every, you know, on the way to community campus, which looks very, unfortunately, we don't own that as a city. But I, you know, I hope that somebody does step up. But I'm happy to continue this conversation at the rec board. And I hope this conversation keeps happening until it, until we actually get a hockey rink.
Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. Irrespective of working with the city, I was fortunate enough to hear a proposal from, I'm trying to think of their name now, the group that does, not Edge, the group that does, runs the rink at Strawberry Bank.
Rink Services?
Rink Services Group, thank you. The president, Gary, gave an outstanding proposal about what the work they do in places where they have rinks such as Keene that have been highly successful. So I'd encourage the rec board to reach out to Gary at Rink Services Group for his input because it was very impressive.
Thank you both. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, approval of grants and donations, acceptance of Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership stewardship grant.
Your Honor, I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement to accept and expend funds in the amount of $10,000 from the Great Bay Resource Protection Partnership to conduct the buffer revival, enhancing water, freshwater, wetland health and community awareness project.
Second.
I feel like they're really in need of an acronym. We appreciate this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, acceptance of New Hampshire DES Coastal Program Coastline Resilience Grant. The amount of $9,486.
I move to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement to accept and expend funds in the amount of $9,486 from the New Hampshire Department Environmental Services Coastal Program to conduct the resilient wetlands, enhancing coastal protection and water quality project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, city manager, we have given the community policing facility update. All right. I'd wait a motion to adjourn. Oh, anything under miscellaneous?
I got one. So post Buma 8, baseball team is in the state championship, heading to the regional championship. So it starts Wednesday at Gil Stadium, but just want to wish them best of luck and, yeah, Portsmouth should be proud.
Your Honor, just one, one more thing. I would, I would just like to say happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Tonight is, is the mayor's birthday. Doesn't look a day over, well, he's always older than me.
Very much appreciated. All right, now a motion to adjourn.
Oh, one more.
Oh, no, one more.
I hope everybody had a chance to see the Seacoast Green Energy Challenge. This started off actually from Durham, they issued a challenge. And we have the towns of Newmarket, Durham, and Exeter, and the cities of Portsmouth and Dover in a friendly competition to see which of our towns can have the most citizens opt up to the clean 33, clean 50, clean 100 levels of community power, so.
When does that start and when does that end?
It started August 1st and it ends January at the end of the rate period.
Excellent, all right.
Let's do it, Portsmouth.
All right, maybe a motion to adjourn now.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.